Be prepared, it might just instantly start this YouTube stream. Okay, I think.
Be prepared, it might just instantly.
Yep, so we are streaming on YouTube now.
What about the town? And channel seventy-nine, I don't see us on the town's live stream.
Probably, it's probably not there yet. Give me one second. I don't normally do it this way, but we're gonna. But of. You know. Give ourselves a workaround here, so. See how it goes.
You're great, Chris, come two or three ways to do anything, right?
Yep, there's always. You know, there's always options here, so.
That's great.
Try to find an option at least. That was probably from YouTube, right?
If you don't see YouTube.
I heard, I heard someone's computer. I know, there it is, streaming. We may only be able to. Be on YouTube.
Uh, I didn't put YouTube on the agenda.
Yeah, that's the public notice. Okay.
YouTube is not on the agenda, so. A location. That won't work.
For some reason. Is this something we need to restart the server, Chris? I, I never, I normally never have to restart the server for anything like this, um, it's probably not. Usually, I can go both ways, I could. Can, I could send something to YouTube from the server, or I could pull something from YouTube into the server. Um, but right now. Is there someone with the video, uh, up on their window, somewhere, because I can hear some feedback.
Not me.
I can send something to YouTube from the server, or I can pull something from YouTube into the server.
Alright, well. I'm trying to, I'm trying my best here to. Figure this out, but. I'm. I'm not having any luck with. The server right now, server is deciding to be a little temperamental, um.
Yeah, I just muted it.
Unfortunately, I'm not sure why. Is it, you normally is. Has no problem doing, uh, this sort of thing, so. It's very odd. I could try restarting it, although. Just not sure. That could take a couple of minutes to re, to reboot. It's very odd. Because we can, I know we are streaming live on YouTube.
What's said here?
Very odd. Try one more thing. Try a different link, see if this could be something with the link. I'm using to. Tell the server where to go. Oh, okay. Okay, it was the link. It is working now.
Sweet.
So.
Put him to Gary.
Schedule.
He's just muted.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna be live on both platforms in. Just a moment. So stand by. Sorry about the delay, it's, it's been, uh, it's been. A little bit tricky here, but.
Been a hot, been a hot minute since we've been streaming.
I guess, I gotta look at this, because it's, uh, hasn't. Hasn't broke yet, since we've been doing this, so. This is the first time I'm gonna. Have to investigate about that, but. Any minute now, we should be up. Okay, I don't know if anyone has seventy-nine up right now.
I'm watching it.
The town livestream, and it's not there yet.
Yes. It's still B O W A, so it's still part of it.
Let that.
Yeah, we port of it.
You've had a minute, I think we'll be all set. We might be a little bit behind.
Uh, there we are.
Good, okay.
That's when we're on seventy-nine, if we're on, um, the town website.
Yep.
Okay. So, we're ready to go?
I'm good. Thank you, sorry about the delay here.
Alright, I'm going to start. Okay, um. Welcome to the February ninth, Orange Government Access Television Committee meeting. Um, present tonight is myself, Saul Silverstein, the chairman. We have assistant coordinator Chris Kelly, coordinator Ron Davis, committee member Mike Muddit, committee member Bob Kelly. Committee member Gary Del Piano via phone and recording secretary Marlene Silverstein. First item on our agenda tonight, and I apologize for the delay, uh, we had some technical difficulties getting the signal through the server. Um, seems to be working right now, so the first item on the agenda is questions and comments, does anyone have any questions and comments? I do have one, uh, during the month, I got an email from the, uh, chair of the Memorial Day Parade Committee. Uh, she wanted to, uh, know how to view the last Memorial Day Parade. A video. Um, and I, uh, asked Chris to contact her and. Uh, let her know how to get at that, I think the reason it was not on, uh, she was unable to find it is because I think Chris had to pull a lot of stuff off. Due to capacity constraints, um, did you, did you get a, a hold of the chair lady?
I actually haven't, um, I've been kind of busy, um, but I've been meaning to get back to her and, and, uh. You know, let her. Know where to go to find it, um, it's gonna be back up on YouTube. And I also gave Kevin Gilbert five copies of last year's Memorial Day Parade. Um, so. I'll let her know, um, either way, she can, you know.
Yeah, I don't know who's on that committee.
Yeah.
So, um, well, I know she's the chair, and so she really needs, what she wants to do, she wants to review what happened last year. But they can do a better job this year, um, continuous improvement type thing.
Yeah, I'll get that.
Please get a hold of her, uh, I, it may seem as far away here in February, but it comes up pretty quickly, especially if you're planning a lot of events. So.
I'll reach out to her tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? No, okay, next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of. The last meeting that we had a quorum for, and that was back in September, um, so we, 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 we canceled a few meetings and, um. Other meetings, uh, when I think one or two meetings were held without a quorum, so we didn't have any, uh, minutes to approve for those. Um, but the last one would be had minutes was September eighth, and I've sent everyone a copy of those, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, and I'll have a second.
Second.
Who is that? Eric, I've got. Yeah, Bob Kelly, I'm sorry, Bob Kelly, seconded, all in favor of approving those minutes?
Bye, bye.
Alright, I believe that was unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the budget, I've sent everyone a copy of. The budget.
Uh, we can't hear you anymore, Saul.
Right? Well, I mean, did I give you two copies of it by chance?
Of what?
Budget.
The agenda, no, you want my copy?
The budget.
A budget, I don't have a copy of the budget, I don't think you printed it.
Okay. I'm sure I had one, I don't know what I did, okay, I'll pull it, I'll just pull it up on screen if I can. Just a second. Budget report, okay.
I.
Okay. I think that was Gary with a laid eye. Alright, um, year-to-date budget.
Sorry.
So, um. What about? Misaligning supplies and expense were about forty-eight percent spent. Recording secretary is about twenty-five percent spent. The, uh, coordinator is sixty-seven percent spent. Assistant is seventy-six percent spent, and the camera operators are only about thirteen percent spent. In total, we spent about sixty-five percent of our budget. And we're seven months in, so I think we're pretty good, I think Chris was spending a lot, he's, he's a little high because of the. Time he has been. Doing bicentennial activities. Are there any questions on the budget?
No, are we still keeping track of the bicentennial hours, just so he can report to Town Hall or to the first selectman, how much was used for the bicentennial? Yep. Cool, thank you.
Okay, um, I guess that's it for the budget. Coordinator reports, we have. A coordinator report for September, another for October, another for November, another for December, and another for January. So, uh, I think we've gone over a few of these in the past. Uh, I don't know if anyone wants to go over the older ones or not, or just vote on them.
Yeah, can I make a motion that we approve September through December?
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by who? Who got that one?
Gary.
Got that again.
Gary got, Gary, who got that?
Just do Gary.
Gary seconded.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving those reports? I.
Bye.
I, I, okay.
I.
I.
Got them all again, thank you very much, that was great, okay, so the last one is the January report, which I sent you all. Today, I think, this, this morning. Um. So, um. Haven't gone through it, Ron, do you want to go through it, do you have a copy of it, or should I?
Uh, all I have is the comments.
What you have is the comments?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't print that out at all, okay, well, let me go through it quickly. So, uh, ten.
I in fact did print it, but I left it at the store.
Okay. Alright, so there were, um, ten new programs this, uh, this month, in Jan- January, so for the, for the seven months of the fiscal year. We have seventy-eight meetings, seven other events, for a total of eighty-five. Meetings or other events, uh, eighty-five programs, and if you project that off the year, it totals about a hundred forty-six. Um, this was a rather low month actually for meetings, um, so it, I don't know, but the average down, uh, hopefully that'll pick up. Um, uh, the statistics, uh, in January, the live hits on Tellview, a hundred twenty-four live hits. A video on demand hits on Tellview sixty-four, and on YouTube, the combination of live and video on demand hits this month. Was seven hundred fifty-five, those numbers have been consistent for the last couple of months. Um, comment-wise, uh, Chris, uh. And Ron did meet. Uh, at least once to discuss how to create the, um, titles that, for the, uh. Um, bicentennial interview programs that Chris is producing, um, so, uh. That meeting took place, and Chris spent January, um, creating the opening and closing titles, and, um. Uh, had them ready to go for, uh, loading, starting to load the individual bicentennial interviews up onto, um, OGAT. Uh, the, the live stream up onto channel seventy-nine and up onto YouTube, and, um. In February, he loaded the first. Um, seven programs up there, and they, I, I looked at them before this meeting, I quickly looked at them, I didn't watch the entire thing. They look, I mean, they look very well done, I think, uh, a really good job, Chris.
Thank you, great.
Alright, the, the studio has continued to function smoothly through the month with no notable problems, and the Optimum Frontier equipment has been functioning without issues. Anything else, the, of note that happened during the month?
Nope, nothing to report.
Nothing else to report, nothing, Chris, okay, great, I'll take a motion to approve the coordinate report. Seemed like again, and seconded by.
Gary.
Take your pick.
I think it was Bob, because Gary's, Gary was muted at the time, okay.
Yep.
All in favor of approving the report?
I. I.
I heard everyone again, thank you very much. Okay, um, bicentennial activities, were there any other? Bicentennial activities that you worked on other than the, um. The interviews?
Uh, nope, just focusing on the interviews.
Okay, yeah. So that's winding down finally.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, um, for the interviews, so we've loaded seven. Right now onto YouTube, they're not on. The, um, channel seventy-nine. Uh, stream, or, or the, um, the, the, the town website yet, are they?
Not quite yet, um, I, we, uh. Just, I wanted to, you know, run some ideas, you know, by you guys, see what you thought about. Uh, air times to, to show it, and, um. I think, um, from, from what I got, you know. From the input I got, you know, everyone, it sounded like we were gonna dedicate about an hour and a half, uh. Of time to show the interviews, so it'd be about three to four interviews at a time. At a, at a prime time in the day to, to, to show them where people are gonna most likely be available, and then we'll. Uh, air them in eight-hour blocks every eight hours, um. You know, until we get through them all, right, I think that was what we. That was what we had in mind to do.
Yeah, and, and, okay, so. And how long would, what, a set of programs, you said three or four programs at a time, how long would that set of programs be up there before the next set?
I don't, well, that's, um, you know, we could do it every week.
Once a week, I would recommend.
Do you think that's long enough to give people an opportunity to see that, I mean, you're gonna see, each program will be up three times a day. So, is a week enough, you think, or should it be longer?
Uh, I think a week's enough, I think maybe we just, after we do finish them all, we start over again.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. There's already too many of them to, to run.
There's thirty, thirty-seven of them, Chris, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll take like ten weeks to get through them all.
Yeah, so we're talking about easily almost three months.
Don't want this half a hamburger?
Uh, Gary, can you go on mute, please? Yeah, so I, I think, I, I, I think more than a week, and it would be hard to, um, the, the, people might not tune in again for, to look for another one, because they might have already seen the three.
Yeah.
And then, like, we can loop them around, we could, I mean, we could pretty much do this all, you know, all twenty-twenty-three, right, there's no reason to stop showing these. No, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and you can put a, a note on the bulletin board or a note on a crawl.
Yep.
Telling people that it's available on YouTube, or, you know.
Yeah, all videos are available on YouTube, this week's stars are blah, 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 blah. And it'll be nice to switch it up, you know, you have some, you have mostly meetings, then you have some interviews. To kind of, uh, you know. It would probably also be nice, Chris, to just put it, like, put like a small, like, bulleted list on our, on the website, the town, the OGAT town website, to just say, you know. Walter, Judy, and this are this week, and then, you know, the week of this will be this person, just so people kind of can tell their friends and family, but still also put that all of them are available on YouTube. Yep.
Might recommend we put it in the paper also.
That'd be great if you could put that on a town, well, landing page, actually, on the front page, if we could get permission to put it there.
I will ask, I will ask. Yeah, do we know any good newspaper editors to, to put it in the newspaper? Alright.
You just know an editor, I won't, I won't say I'm good.
Alright, fair enough.
Maybe I'll say I'm great.
So, I, I will ask our editor. To, uh, the editor, uh, if you can, uh. Prevail with the publisher to. Put a plug in for us.
Yeah, I really think that if it's in the paper, it'll get a lot of viewing.
It's a good possibility.
Yeah, I mean, between that, the website, you'll probably get all the audiences in town, right? Yep. And maybe some subscribers to the YouTube channel, which would always be good. Yeah, we could probably also talk to Terry about putting on Orange Live. I can make a link to get ju- directly to those interviews, and I'll take you to the entire playlist of.
Yeah.
All of them, which will be good, if you're just looking for that.
Great. Okay, anything else on that subject? Okay, I think we're done with that, action items, we've been, um, postponing these and tabling these, and I think somewhere along the line, we decided to table them even further out. Till Chris was all settled, is that right, is that my, is my memory certain me correctly?
A hundred percent, yeah, we, we wanted to get these videos out before we picked up on these items.
So we'll table it again.
Yeah, I think maybe next month will be a good time to start talking about these items again.
Okay. Um, so, action items are tabled again, cat grant, so we spent all the money on the last grant. Got all the equipment. That we ordered, everything's operating successfully, well, um. Assuming the next cat grant will be coming up in a few months.
No, it will be coming out this month.
Oh.
Oh, the, the, the applications will be coming out this month. And because I just filed the report with PURA for last year's grants. And so you will have until July to come up with your list of requests.
July comes quick, even though it's February, so.
That is true.
In the next, in the next. At the next meeting, uh, we should start. Putting our list together of our wish list of what we'd like. I know Chris, um. For these bicentennial interviews, um, one of the police officers. Shot some B-roll footage using the police department drone, I think, and he gave it to us, and Chris used that in the opening. Title, opening scenes of the interviews, and it looks really good, and I think Chris was thinking perhaps we could use one. So that might be, um, for, for major events, like, we have events like the parades and the, the country fair and the. Fireman's gun, all things that you might be able to use it for, so we should think about that, at least as one item. Um. And the things, uh, that we might need, so bring, bring a list, Ron, Chris, the rest of the committee. Of what we could use.
I will give us some thought.
So, next meeting, let's start the list, thank you. Uh, equipment inventory, as far as I know, it's up to date, Chris, I did send you. After I updated. The equipment inventory list, I sent it to you. And I asked you to fix some, some things I wasn't sure about the location of the equipment, because it was, some of it was in Town Hall, and some might have been at Mary L Tracy School. Uh, so I wasn't sure where some of it was, and I asked you to just check that, those parts and correct it for me. Please do that, and send me that copy.
I will.
Okay. And committee vacancies, we still have three vacancies. And, um, don't know what to do about that, I think it's difficult to get people to volunteer these days. And, uh, that's not, that's not an easy thing, I think we do have, we have advertised the position on our bulletin board and just.
Forever.
Yeah, forever, yeah, so I don't know how to deal with that right now. Um. I'll then to continue as best we can. And, um.
Did we get anywhere with talking about lowering the number of committee members?
No, not, not really, I think we, we batted that around a little and didn't really. Move forward on how to go about that. Um, I mean, if we lowered it to five, we'd, we would only need three for a quorum.
Which I think that's still, I mean, it's a good group, right, it's not just one person or something, so.
I mean, we're getting by with four.
Well, yeah, but.
I think that we have to lower it.
Yeah.
I think we have to lower it. To, whatever it is that we can get three, because, uh, I know I'm gonna have some problems coming up. Um, of, of making meetings, and, 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 and it's not right that with you, with you guys all so involved, that because one person can't make it. That we can't do business, and I, I just think it's wrong, and I. Think that maybe we should, um, ask, ask our, 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 our. Mayor, or not mayor, but, uh, town, town clerk, or whatever the heck he is, uh, you know, to do something about it, because it needs to get done. Um, either that, or to get someone else to become part of the, the, the membership.
Yeah, I think we have to, um. If we want to lower it, I believe we have to request. That from the Board of Selectment. At one of their meetings, and, um.
Well, then maybe what, what, that's what we should do then.
Yeah. So I think, because they have to, I think they have to vote on that, um. To make that happen, actually. So that may be our next step.
And maybe if they find out that we're, we're really low on membership, maybe the, 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 the town, the town. Uh, uh, selectmen will find someone, some other people to be a part of this committee.
Yep, I was thinking the same thing.
Okay. We'll, um. Think about getting that done, too, um. Uh, I think I'm not, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be in. In town at the next Board of Select, I mean, so I can't do it this month unless someone else wants to. Um. So, the earliest.
It would be March, right?
Same time in March.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna be in, I'm not gonna be in town during the next selectman's meeting either, I'll be back, I'll be back at the beginning of April. And then I'm leaving the end of May, so just keep, keep that in mind.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, um, anything else that?
We can always do it in April, right, um, April was, well, April. They're over, uh, High Plains Community Center that month, I think, right, for the.
Well, you know, we can, we can try to do it. Trying, uh, because I was on the agenda for the Board of Selectment.
Okay.
Or, man, you know.
Good idea.
What it takes, at least.
Yeah. Gary, do you get satellite internet on your, on your bus?
No, uh, no, we don't, we, we, um, today, I have. Um, I have internet. From the, the park, but, uh, I don't get it all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think it would be semi-on purpose.
We lost him.
You lost me, hello?
Now you're back. I think you muted yourself accidentally.
I said, no, I don't, I don't get, um, I don't have. Satellite internet, no. I have internet from the park. Usually, sometimes. Or, um, I use my phone internet. Or um, I use my phone internet. Yeah, your phone's your best bet. Yeah, yes, but even here. Here in this, in this park, if I didn't have, if I didn't have uh the internet from the park, which is called Tango Net. Then I would not, I would not even, my phone doesn't work. Uh, yeah, yeah, that's what it is. Yeah, so just so you know.
I think we've exhausted our agenda and uh. I'll take a motion.
I'm exhausted.
I'll take a.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thanks.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, thank you all, and we'll see you next month, I hope.
Thank you. Take care.